I call the school board meeting to order. And Ms. Kelhan, if you could take the role. Do we have a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
I have neither. I move that the agenda be adopted as written.
Second? There's been a motion in second that the school board adopt the agenda as written. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. Okay. How about you two ladies right there, raise your hand so you know I got you. Raise your hand. Would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Of course! Not to put you on spot or anything.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I hope we get to meet you later. Okay. I would like to introduce the Pierce Elementary School teacher Linda Gent. And if you guys, when we introduce you, if you could come down here so we could get you on the microphone and everybody can see you and hear you on the tape, who will introduce her student who won a nationwide contest through Scholastic Publishers. Yeah, right, right to the... Yes, especially you. Yes, up front, central. This one? And Ms. Gent, why don't you say where you teach again and what grade?
Okay. My name is Linda Gent, and I teach the gifted program at MM Pierce Elementary School. And Mason is one of my 4th grade students in the GT reading program. We're here because last fall, we entered, I say "we," my children and I, entered a contest. The Storyworks magazine that's put out by Scholastic had a contest. One of their authors was looking for a character idea. So she asked the magazine to have a contest, and the children were allowed to write about a character. And we sent them in. All my children submitted entries. And then we didn't hear anything, and we didn't hear anything. And I thought, oh, well, you know, that's the end of that. But then this spring, we got a letter from them. And apparently, there were over 5,000 entries. And the author, Lauren Tarsus, read every single one of them and picked a winner and top five finalists. And Mason was one of those finalists. So I was very proud and surprised, out of 5,000. So he's going to share with you his character, what he wrote. Okay? Can he?
Okay. So I have the paper right here. And then I put the name, Silverton the Robot. Age, 1,230 years old. And put in parentheses, "very old." Hometown, frozen base in northern Alaska. In appearance, he has a rusty tarnished silver head, a silver worn-down leaky body, titanium broken arms, silver slimy sticky wheels under a tall pole under his body, antenna that are squeaky and snapped in half, and a cracked screen that shows his emotions on his back. Hobbies, he likes to find nuts and bolts and weld them together to make machines. Quarks, whenever he finds scrap metal, he has the urge to pick it up. This is why he likes landfill so much. And skills, he can move 300 miles per hour, even though he is old. He also can jump 10 feet high. And he needs to get fixed so he can work properly. And he solves this by going to another lab that helps him work better. He hopes he can get better and become a brand-new robot.
Opportunity for him to come and share that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, and congratulations.
That is certainly incredible. Isn't that amazing? That's very good. Well, congratulations. Okay. The Senate Page Program. Cedar Lee, I would like to introduce Cedar Lee Assistant Principal, Ms. Shorb, who will introduce a student who participated in the Senate Page Program.
Hi. Oh, I'm a little taller than that. Good evening. I'm Leah Shorb. I'm the Assistant Principal at Cedar Lee Middle School. And I have the tremendous pleasure of introducing you to Jordan Hadler. I could go on all evening. They know what it's like when they stick a mic in my hand. I promise I won't. Jordan, though, is one of those middle school students that people dream about. Her grades are impeccable. Her maturity level is just beyond imagination. Her parents are here with us tonight, Tom and Joy Hadler, and her little sister Skylar, who is also a 6th grader at Cedar Lee Middle School. Her grandparents are here, and her uncle. So we're really excited. She travels with family like somebody else I know. Okay. So Jordan has asked me to stay down here, even though I didn't want to. But I will. I'm going to stay down here with her for support. But she knows way more about this than I do. She was a Senate Page.
Thank you, Ms. Shorb, for that warm welcome. And I thank the rest of the school board for inviting me to speak about the Senate Page Program. And I also thank Ms. Shorb and Mr. Lee, the principal of Cedar Lee Middle School, for support he gave me through the process of applying for the Page Program and throughout the entire session. As a Page serving for senators in the General Assembly Building for two months was a life-changing experience. Being in the workforce for the first time was an experience I will never forget. I learned a lot about politics and how the legislative process works in our state. I met all 40 senators, and out of 42 pages, I was one of the three pages that memorized all the senators' names and where they sat in session. We worked from 8:15 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. In the morning, we were required to write down our schedules every day. All of us were split in three groups. And most often, they had one group in the Capitol, one work in the General Assembly Building, and one work on the floor during session. The longest I sat in session was four hours. Working on the floor was one of my favorite things as a Page. Seeing the senators throwing things, singing, and stealing the gavel during session was quite amusing. During our downtime, we visited a lot of historical places in Richmond. We visited the Supreme Court of Virginia, the Library of Virginia, and the Virginia War Memorial. Virginia Credit Union came and talked to us about how to manage our finances. Capital Tour Guides came and explained the history of the capital in Richmond. And the first female Page that served for the Virginia Senate visited us. We also visited a furniture store owned by a former Senate Page. She had very nice furniture, and we all had a very great time, until six of the pages decided to use the elevator. It did not end well. They were stuck in the elevator for 30 minutes. Towards the end of our session, we had dinner at the Governor's Mansion. We met Governor McAuliffe and the First Lady. It was a very nice event. And we presented them with a large amount of donations for the Virginia Food Bank that we collected during session. Leaving Richmond and transitioning back to school was hard, because I had developed a different kind of learning and had so many new friends. I did not want to leave. It was a wonderful experience, and if I could, I would return to work every year. I was fortunate to be selected as a Senate Page Messenger. It has influenced me to pursue a career in public service.
That's great. That's outstanding. That's great. All right. That was wonderful. Okay. Now on to science and engineering. Vanita Ribero, who is a Warrenton Middle School teacher and the leader of our Faukeer County Science Fair. I'll introduce you to announce our motto, contest winners.
Thank you, Chairwoman Wolf, and members of the school board, Dr. Jack. Last year, we had a science fair logo competition. And the logo that we used for the science fair was the product of a student's artwork. So this year, we had a motto competition for a $100 prize. And we had entries from private and public school students in the elementary, middle, and high schools. The competition was open to 3rd through 12th graders. And to the great advantage of our students, it turns out that we have a hard time making up our minds, because we had two excellent entries. One from Senior Brad Hauska of Kettle Run High School and Mountain Vista Governor's School, who submitted a very short and very potent phrase, "Pursue Progress." So we have a $100 prize for Brad, who also participated in the science fair and joined us at the state science fair. We're able to offer such nice and generous prizes in addition to the $4,400 we handed out in cash at the science fair on March 14th. We were also able to take 10 students to the state science fair. All expenses paid, room, board, well, I don't know if you say "board," but hotel room, all the food, the travel, everything was funded by our sponsors, who are the Sharp Science Students Foundation and Learning Tree International. We have private donors, Linda and John Suter, and the Patricia and David Voss Foundation, and a whole lot of other community supporters. One of those community supporters also happens to be G. Willicors Toys and Books. And because our other winner is 3rd grader, William, and correct me if I'm mispronouncing your name, is it Sitzman? William Sitzman, 3rd grader from PB Smith Elementary School, who submitted this motto, "Discover the world through science." And we liked that so much that we are also going to be using that. So William, you will be receiving a $100 check, as well as a $25 gift certificate from G. Willicors. Brad, I hope you don't mind.
All right. Thanks. That's great. Congratulations, Brad and William. That's great. Okay. Now I introduce our gifted and talented supervisor, Ms. Gorman, who will announce the Fine Arts Festival winners. And you can introduce the people who are accompanying you.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Jack, and audience. I would like to take this opportunity to introduce two of our art teachers, Elizabeth Williams from Coleman Elementary School and Marisa Pappas from Warrenton Middle School. We had a 3rd teacher, Gary Colson, from Liberty High School, that couldn't be here with us tonight. They are up here with me, because they are the teachers of the students that were recognized at the Fine Arts Festival this year in March. And being new to Faukeer County, I didn't know what to expect of the Fine Arts Festival. And to say that I was impressed is an understatement. If you have not yet been there, next year, next March, be on the lookout for it. It is amazing. Hundreds and hundreds of amazing pieces of artwork and musical performances as well. Our talented students are given this opportunity to show what they can do, and it is just a wonderful afternoon or a Friday night event for you to go to. Three students were chosen during the Fine Arts Festival. Their artwork was chosen by art teachers of different levels, and they were awarded ribbons. But I felt that they should come here this evening, show you their artwork, show the audience their artwork, and be recognized for that as well. So our elementary winner was Kathryn Barrett from Coleman Elementary School. Our middle school winner was Darby Smith from Warrenton Middle School.
Excellent. Gosh.
And I'm unsure if our high school winner is here or not. Veronica Talbert, are you here? Wonderful. Veronica from Liberty High School. If everybody could just pose for a picture opportunity.
Spread, yeah. Come on over.
Over here. Stay right in front of us. You guys are more important than us. There you go. Aren't they beautiful? And as much as I believe they probably would like to take them home with them, I'm going to ask, if I could hold on to them for a little while, I'm trying to find a really nice place so that others can see them as well, so they can be displayed. And then we'll get them back to you in a couple months. Okay? Is that good? All right. Thank you to all the students and teachers who participated in the Fine Arts Festival. I know how much work went into it, and I'm really looking forward to next year's event. Thank you.
I just want to echo what Ms. Gorman said about the arts festival. It is, it was phenomenal. It was just, it's an art gallery. It was just amazing. Okay. Now... And if any of you want to leave, it's okay if you leave without waiting for all this other stuff.
You shouldn't have told them that. Thanks again for coming, folks.
That's great. Okay. The week of May 4th was Teacher Appreciation Week, but because our meeting was after that, we actually passed the resolution at our work session in the end of April. And we just wanted, because teachers are so essential to everything we do here, we wanted to read this and really make a statement about our support for our teachers here in Faukeer County. Whereas teacher quality is widely acknowledged as the single most factor influence student learning and achievement. And whereas Virginia teachers, while presenting the rigorous content of standards of learning and local curricula, challenge students to apply what they learn through critical thinking and problem solving. And whereas Virginia teachers prepare students for success in the new Virginia economy through the integration of technology and instruction, and through the development of 21st century skills, including collaboration and creativity. And whereas Virginia teachers strive to instill within their students a lifelong love of learning and discovery. And whereas Virginia teachers encourage students to achieve their goals while recognizing that every student has unique strengths and needs. And whereas Virginia teachers, through their service as mentors, coaches, storytellers, nurturers, and club sponsors, model good citizenship and encourage students to contribute to the well-being of their communities. And whereas the commitment of Virginia teachers to academic excellence and college and career readiness is reflected in annual increases in student performance on state and national assessments. And whereas Virginia teachers directly assist the State Board of Election and the Department of Education in periodic revisions of the standards of learning by serving on review committees and in other capacities. And whereas the Faukeer County School Board wishes to acknowledge all that teachers do and commend them for their selfless and tireless efforts. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Faukeer County School Board on the 27th day of April 2015, that the week of May 4th, 2015, be proclaimed as Teacher Appreciation Week. We just really want to thank, wholeheartedly, all of our teachers here in this division for all that you do. So that's it. Anybody have anything else? Okay. Announcements. Now for the exciting part. The Personnel Committee will meet Thursday, May 14th, at 8:00 a.m. in the School Administration Conference Room. The May Mountain Vista Governor's School Board meeting is canceled. The Parks and Rec Co-op meeting will be held Tuesday, May 19th, at 6:00 p.m.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think that meeting has been rescheduled to September.
September what?
I don't know. Whatever the day is.
Okay. So rescheduled to September.
Yep.
Okay. And Chairman's Night will be Tuesday, May 26th, at 5:00 p.m. in the School Administration Conference Room. And there will be a school board work session on Tuesday, May 26th, at 6:00 p.m. Note, that's Tuesday, in the School Administration Conference Room. And the Building Committee will meet Thursday, May 28th, at 8:30 in the School Administration Conference Room. And graduation dates are Kettle Run High School on May 29th, 6:00 p.m., and Cougar Stadium; Faukeer High School, May 30th, 8:00 a.m. on Falcon Field; and Liberty High School, May 31st, 3:00 p.m. at Jiffy Lube Live. And the School Support Council, the School Support Council and the Health Advisory Committee ended their meetings for the school year, so those are canceled if they appear on there. And there will be a Special Education Advisory Committee meeting Thursday, June 4th, at 5:30 p.m. in the Central Complex Building A Conference Room. And the next exciting school board meeting is Monday, June 8th, and will begin with recognitions at 6:30 p.m. and the regular school board meeting at 7:00 p.m. at the Liberty High School. Okay? Oh, and last day of school is June 3rd.
Right.
Okay. All right. Citizens' time. Community involvement is an important component of a successful school division, and the school board welcomes public input. Please be respectful of all speakers and limit your time to three minutes. And matters relating to personal, to personnel or personnel issues cannot be discussed. Okay. And we have a list here, I think. Did I have it? Oh, yeah. Here it is. Here it is. Sally Berry.
I'm here in the capacity of the Mountain Vista Governor's School Foundation Board. Last week was an extraordinary week for our Rocket Teams. Mountain Vista had two Rocket Teams, one comprised of, actually, in the Washington Post this week, somebody said comprised, it should never be used, composed of five juniors and another team composed of five seniors. First of all, earlier in the week, Ann Hall, who's a Realtor, had called me and said she wanted to sponsor some science teachers to hear Dr. Ellen Stofen, who is a resident of this county and is the lead scientist at NASA, was speaking at a Chamber of Commerce luncheon. And so I gave her the names of science adults, and then she read about the Rocket Contest. And so she called me and she said, "Do you think those kids could come?" So I put her in touch with Dr. Williamson. And at the luncheon, we had both teams, with the exception of one student on the senior team, who lives in Rappahannock County and couldn't be there. What was wonderful, from my perspective about this, first of all, we had the Mountain Vista bus, our custom bus, parked out front, which was pretty cool. But for the business community to be exposed to these young people was wonderful. One of the science people who was there, you heard from earlier tonight, Vanita Ribero, who's the director of our science fair. And after the meeting, a couple of people came up to her, asking how they could help support the science fair. So it was very advantageous from that perspective. When Dr. Stofen gave her talk and her PowerPoint, it was kind of amusing, because I could see that those students were understanding what she was saying much better than most of the adults in the room. So then Saturday was just an extraordinary day. If you read Karen Parkinson's excellent release, you already know the basics about our Rocket Teams. There were originally 700 that entered this national competition, which has been going on for some time. 100 were selected as finalists. They were from all over the United States. Virginia had four teams, and two of them were ours. Mountain Vista Governor's School, I was so proud to see their names listed. Incidentally, as an aside, there were two alternates from Virginia. They were from Thomas Jefferson. At any rate, I went up on Saturday, and, oh, by the way, the other people that were at the luncheon, Kim Raines, math teacher at Mountain Vista, and Dr. Williamson. At any rate, on Saturday morning, they had this great big board, and you know how beautiful Great Meadow is. They have this great big board, and had the names of all the schools, and then had a space to put their score. And the score, if you bothered to read the press release, it was based on altitude. It had to go 800 feet, not much more, not much less. There was a parameter. It had to take a certain amount of time to complete, reach the ground, and it had to have an egg that didn't break. So it was just, these teams, some had costumes, most, like ours, had t-shirts, and they would gather around that board. They had three launching platforms in the middle of the field. And later on, I talked to one of the national organizers, and he said, "The reason it's at Great Meadow every year is because there's just no place else like it, where it's safe, you know, it's not going to land in anybody's yard, they've got plenty, and everybody can see what's happening." It was beautiful. So in the morning, with the teams, it was like golf. You won a low score. And there was a team from Seattle that had a 1. All I could think of was Boeing. And so our students were watching, and both teams made the 42 that were going to be in the finals in the afternoon. In the afternoon, the senior team came in, there were cash prizes for the first 10 teams, donated by every major engineering company in the country, all of whom were there. But the first 10 teams got cash prizes. Our senior team came in 11th. But still, 11 out of 100. The junior team, when I say junior, they were junior students, their rocket went up, and when it came down and they retrieved it, they were very excited, because they looked at what it said for the altimeter, and they knew the timing was right, and the egg didn't break, and they were very excited, because they knew they were going to have a wonderful low score. They got it over to the judges' table, and the battery died. And so they couldn't read the altimeter. They would have been 10th. But as their teachers, Kim Raines is their advisor, and they determined that it was a very good lesson, because next year, they'll have a spare battery, and they can do it all again. So I hope another year, there'll be more from our school division there observing. Of course, Dr. Williamson was there, and Kim, and myself, and a teacher from the northern part of Mountain Vista. So it was, and then for me to stand here as a former school board member in a major education sport, and hear about the huge variety of successes that we heard about tonight is very heartwarming and makes me very proud. So thank you for your support of Governor's School. We're going to add a 10th grade, and it's going to be absolutely critical that every school board who is part of Mountain Vista continue to support the program. So thank you.
Thank you, Sally. That was great.
To compliment our schools about, I served on the Electoral Board for three years. I declined another term. But one of my gripes when I was on there was that I felt that we should be able to register every single senior in Faukeer High School and get them registered to vote and get them, you know, excited about elections. I always felt that the turnout was very poor. Well, this year, something really cool happened, and I wish I knew his name. A teacher from Kettle Run got those kids, rallied those kids, and had a lot of them, many, many more registering than we've had before. And he either contacted, or a friend of his at Liberty heard about it and rose to the challenge, and we had record numbers at Liberty. So I'm hoping that next year, we can really get a competition going among all three of our high schools and get record numbers of seniors registered. And next year is going to be critical, because of course, it's a presidential year. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Linda Williams?
Sally?
Sally. Was it Chad, right?
That would have been my guess, too.
Yeah.
Good evening. The board recently had a discussion at the work session with regard to middle school students being unable to change their selection of a music class once they make a choice as a rising 6th grader. And I think to consider making a change that would allow them to make a choice going forward. And I just wanted to give my thoughts on this. Rising 6th graders are offered multiple options to explore before, to explore different music concentrations before they have to make a choice. They attend performances, they work individually with teachers, both prior to 6th grade, over the summer in a lot of cases, and early on in the 6th grade year. There are camps offered by band and orchestra. There are camps offered by band and orchestra that allow, early in the summer, that allow them to hear and try different types of instruments, play some notes, play as part of a group, and see how they feel about it. Students are also encouraged to visit music stores nearby and, for free, try out different instruments and see what they're comfortable with. Our music teachers understand that sometimes a student's not happy with their initial choice, but with good communication and dedication on all sides, a change can generally be worked out on a case-by-case basis. This should not, this should be the exception, however, and not the rule. Switching between instruments may require private or extra instruction and practice to get up to speed with the rest of the class. Such changes require a child to develop an entirely new set of skills before being able to play with the rest of the group. Placing a beginner into an intermediate class creates barriers, not only to that child's success, but to the success of the rest of the group as well. Music instruction differs from most of the other exploratory options in that it builds on itself, much the way that math or language instruction does. We don't place children in Algebra I when they haven't had pre-algebra courses, and we don't start students off in Spanish II. They take Spanish I first. There are certain aspects of instruction and skills that need to be learned before the students are ready to move on, and each year of middle school, of music education in middle school builds on the prior one. Making a switch to a chorus class may not present the same challenges as changing instruments because we are all born with a natural ability to sing, except according to my kids, myself. If a child is unsure about whether to try an instrument or a chorus in sixth grade, the teachers that I've spoken with all recommend that you try the instrument first. Middle school's not just a time to explore, it's also a time to learn about teamwork and commitment to working hard, and when something proves difficult, to working harder. It's a time to learn to work as part of a group, and to listen, and cooperate, and communicate with your group. Choosing to be part of a music ensemble takes dedication. Students and parents need to understand this from the beginning. It's a commitment involving time, and money, and hard work. And in order for the team and the individual to be successful, everyone involved must be willing to make this commitment. I disagree with the logic of allowing middle school students to change concentrations at will for the purpose of exploring. This further hinders the ability of our music teachers to advance the music and skills that are being taught. I understand that not every child is serious about music, and that many are thrilled with the opportunity to try a variety of electives in the seventh grade. But some of these choices have come at the expense of more serious music students. The children, there are children who have asked to make a switch and made it work. This would be worked out in advance with their music teachers. I haven't spoken to a teacher who wasn't open to helping a child make that switch if they were committed to doing it. But it needs to be understood that it may take some extra effort on their own in advance of switching in order to make that work out. I respectfully ask that the Board members consider all the music students in this decision, as well as our teachers and the program itself. The students who have made the commitment to music have already suffered cuts to their program, and the teachers have already been given less time in which to teach these students. Please don't ask this group to sacrifice their commitment and instruction time yet again by mixing students with various levels of experience. Students entering the music school, the middle school music program should be encouraged to do as much exploring and research as possible before choosing their instrument and their class. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Did anybody else want to speak?
Nope. We're good.
Okay. Board reports. Mr. Bland?
This past Friday, the middle schools had a track and field, field competition over here at Faukeer High School. And my granddaughter participated and took second in the 50-yard competition, 50-yard dash, second in her heat, and also second overall. And she took second place in the 100-yard dash and fourth overall. So, I am very proud of her, and of course, I'm proud of all the kids that participated in this event this past week.
Duke, you've got to give her name.
Oh, Cameron. I'm sorry. Oh, gosh.
Or you will really be in the doghouse.
You're absolutely right. And also, congratulations to Matt Raines, Faukeer High School senior, for his acceptance to George Mason University on a wrestling scholarship. So, Matt Raines, congratulations.
It's now late spring, May, and that's the time for flowers, pollen, sneezing, and SOL testing. And if you have been into one of our schools recently, particular elementary schools, you'll see signs normally sort of written, "Shh." And once again, it proves to me that, you know, these are, you know, I'm glad we're having peace and quiet in our schools. I see the greatest violators being the adults, not the students of these. But once again, the stress that's put on people, teachers and students during this time of SOL testing seems to me to be, you know, flies in the face of what we're trying to achieve in education here in Faukeer County Public Schools. So, once again, I, year after year, I feel this, this way. Second, I just wanted to report something we talked about in our Finance Committee meeting, which was the technology grants that we are looking at dispersing to the various schools. The grants, the applications, as I understand it, have come in. What is the name of the?
Talig.
Talig.
T-A-L-I-G.
They've come in, the applications have come in, they've been reviewed, and oftentimes gone back and forth to kind of optimize the work that will be done in that area. The implementation schedule has these, a lot of these grants being, or these IT technology grants being forthcoming in next school year. However, what's impressed me is the work done by our IT department. Louis McDonald, who is here, and his team have really worked diligently with teachers who all have their own thing they want to do, and work to optimize that. And so, it's more proof that IT isn't just a cost, it's truly a way to leverage things to improve education. And our administration is doing that, and doing that effectively. So, Louis, to you guys and your team, thank you very much for doing that.
That's great.
That's great.
Oh, I just wanted to say that I know that today was the golf outing for the Education Foundation, and I know that, I remembered it only because I called Dr. Jack while he was out, I think, on the golf course. So, I apologize for that, one of Maureen's many emergencies. But I wanted to say, I had the opportunity this year to actually help sponsor one of our teachers to play in the golf tournament. And I realized that the cost of the, you know, the golf tournament to play in it can be really, you know, it's a lot of money for a teacher to be able to afford. So, I would suggest that we look into next year maybe sponsoring a few teachers to be able to play in the golf outing, because I think it would be a really nice way to show our appreciation and get them a day out so they could, you know, they do so much for the education of our children. It would be nice if they could go out and play golf and, and talk to people that are important for them to be able to go out and meet. So, that's my suggestion.
Good idea. Yep. I don't have anything. Both of my meetings were canceled last month, but I will follow up.
Did we get word on the outcome of the golf tournament?
Well, I will follow up. I think I heard that Dr. Jack's team came in first place.
Oh, no!
That's right.
But that would be consisting of Dr. Jack, Tripp Burton, Major Warner, and my son-in-law.
What's his name?
Kevin Porter. There you go.
And I kind of remember, actually, Dr. Jack knowing that your son-in-law was like this fabulous golfer and asking for him to be on the team. Is that, is that correct?
Oh, no. No, no. No. That's all. That's it. Obviously, you have something big to share. I really want to accent the Liberty High School Cooperative Education Luncheon I went to that was so wonderful. All the employers, and what that is, it's an amazing program where teachers and employers work to integrate the curriculum into the job, into the classroom, and all the employers were there. And it's always a great event where you really learn a lot that our community is doing in our schools. So, thanks to Sondra Colvin and Valerie Hermes. That was, that was excellent. And then again, at Liberty High School, the awards night for the over 1.5 million, right, Mr. Cox? 1.5 million dollars over in scholarships, and it was really amazing to see all the students there. It was great. It was a really great evening. And then the Kettle Run High School Honors Breakfast was also great. We have so many wonderful students who are doing some incredible things, and it's really neat to watch them. And then I just want to thank everybody who, on May 5th, donated to the Give Local Piedmont to the Faukeer Excellence in Education Foundation. We, right now, at least, got about $4,400, and there's prizes to be awarded that we won't know for another couple of weeks, but it looks like we might go into the $8,000 range, not sure. So, I don't want to make an announcement. But thank you to everyone who took the time to donate and make all your friends donate, and it was great. So, that was excellent. Dr. Jack?
A couple of things quickly. I wanted to mention the foundation, which we showed us did, and a lot of excitement with the Education Foundation. And the Give Local Piedmont, you know, if we end up with $8,000 with the amount of time we had to prep for it, really makes me feel good about next year and subsequent years and what we can do through that foundation or through that, that giving opportunity. And then I think today, early indications are maybe net around $10,000 more for the foundation to the golf tournament. So, we're doing some good things, and it's through the work of a lot of really good people who are working tirelessly to get a good foundation within that organization so that we can provide for lots of different things, for students, for STEM camps, field trips, et cetera. So, a lot of good things happening there. I also wanted to comment just briefly on expedited retakes, because I'm getting some feedback from parents, and I, this is for the Board's consumption and anyone else who might be interested. The General Assembly's passed legislation this past session whereby students in grades three through five can take, retake SOL tests just like high school students have been able to in the past. But I think what's happened, it caught, first of all, caught people a little bit off guard because I don't think folks anticipated that it would impact this year's testing, but it is. And it's one of those things where it's sort of, be careful what you wish for, because the VSBA, the Virginia School Board Association, the Virginia Association of Superintendents, the Virginia State School Board, they all pushed for this, for allowing third through fifth graders to retake SOL tests. And it's the ultimate catch-22, because it's, it is more testing, which is a bad thing, but students, more and more schools now are losing their accreditation because of the increased rigor and cut scores per test. So, schools who are on the brink, and we have a few of them who are, you know, close to regaining school, their full accreditation, they're just in a tough spot. And so, we've, we are allowing for students, or advertising that students can retake tests, but parents can opt out of testing, retesting if they choose. But it is truly one of those difficult situations where, you know, this has happened, and we asked for this for years, but the wins, the political wins are starting to change now, and there's a pushback against all the testing. But retake, retaking tests is, retaking a test, you're still taking a test. And that's, that's a problem, but it's a bit of a dilemma. So, we're doing this this year, students will be retaking tests, parents can opt them out, and we'll see. We'll see what transpires. I think the overwhelming majority of school divisions are doing the exact same thing that we're doing. So, I wanted to mention that. And I also want to put this out there just as, as a sort of a apology. There is so much great stuff going on at the end of the year. I mean, there just is. Every single day, there's really cool stuff happening in our schools and our community, et cetera. And, you know, I just wish, I wish I could go to more of it. I think we all feel that way. We could attend more of it, and it's always painful to hear about some great thing that happened, and you weren't able to go and you missed it. So, I don't know what I'd do about that, but maybe clone, some cloning or something. But, I mean, everyone, I think we all experienced that. You just want to go to stuff, you want to attend things, and you just can't do it. So, but there's so many great things going on in the county, and May is, it's the wacky season. It just is. It's, everything is happening in May. But it's good to know that, you know, a really, an important test for schools is this. Someone told me this many years ago. When the school bell rings, if people are fleeing from your school, trying to get away as quickly as possible, that's a bad thing. But if the school bell rings at the end of the day, and people are staying because they want to be involved in things after school, et cetera, that's really a good thing. And it's nice to know in this county, that's exactly what happens within our schools. That's very, very, very encouraging and very promising. And that's it.
Okay. All right. And now to the Financial Management Report.
Good evening. You have before you the financial report as of the end of March. We are for our operating fund on track. Friday was the last day for purchase orders that are non-emergency, so we are starting to wind down and close the year. I will also note that food nutrition, you'll see that, you know, with all the snow days and not bringing in revenues, that revenues now are creeping back up over expenditures, so that's good. And one other thing I wanted to point out is that, and we talked about this at the Finance Committee, this has been an excellent year for grants. Just this month, we had another special ed grant of $10,000, and our Human Resources Department brought in a $20,000 grant for some orientation. So, I think they're doing great things, and that's really wonderful. Any questions? All right. Thanks.
No, that's great. Okay. HR or Department Report. This one's always kind of scary at this time of the year.
You're going to have your work cut out for you, aren't you?
Well, I do love May. So, good evening. The following is a brief summary of what's occurring in the Human Resources Department. We have posted jobs begin to fill vacancies for the 2015, 2016 school year. Currently, we have 84 certified vacancies, and we have 28 classified vacancies. Teacher contracts did go out today, so teachers have until May 22nd to sign, which means at that point, we may have a, either some more vacancies to recruit for. So, currently, we, this is not updated as of today. We had many offers, so hopefully, when I come back next time, the list will be smaller. We're also continuing through the summer to do our recruitment fairs for school bus drivers, bus aides, school nutrition, and custodians. And then June 1st is our retirement dinner at Stone Ridge. Any questions this evening?
Nope. That's good. Consent agenda, and I will not read this after you read it. Okay. I will move that the School Board approve the following. The minutes of the April 13th School Board Meeting and April 27th Special School Board Meeting and Work Session. Monthly bills and payroll. Personnel actions, which include the hiring of one custodian and one school nutrition employee. The resignation of a guidance counselor. 14 teachers, two custodians, three instructional assistants, one school nutrition employee, one office associate, three. The retirement of 11 teachers. One librarian, one diagnostician. Two instructional assistants, two nurses, one bus driver. The release of one teacher. And the employment period ending for two teachers. The history and social studies textbook adoption, the probability and statistics textbook adoption, and the Carl Perkins Grant.
Second?
There's been a motion in a second that the School Board approve the minutes, the monthly bills and payroll, personnel actions, and the textbooks adoptions. Any discussion?
And the Carl Perkins.
Oh, and, excuse me, Carl Perkins Grant. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Okay. Information items. Educational and migratory children certification. Dr. Burgwin.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Jack. I have before you the annual recertification that Faukeer County will participate in the Shenandoah Valley Migrant Education Program. We have Ms. Callahan to thank for this. She had a little tickler on her, Agenda Items came to me. I called them, they had even forgotten. So, we, they now know, and sent the letter to Dr. Jack, but I just wanted to give Ms. Callahan a shout-out for being so on the ball. We are leading in the, in the region, at least in promptness with this. At this time, we do not have any students whose parents are migratory workers, but we participate in this consortium so that should that happen, we would be prepared with resources. And they're very nice people to work with. On occasion, Ms. Hoover and I have had to call them to see what the situation is. Very helpful. So, I would ask that you move this to action items tonight, so that we can meet their deadline. Any questions?
No. Sounds great. Anybody else?
No.
Okay. Revisions to-
Okay. Revisions to Section 1 bylaws. Dr. Jack?
This is a minor adjustment, something I thought we already did, but apparently, maybe we were doing it and breaking some kind of rule, but not really.
Don't say that.
That was joking, joking. This allows the clerk to maintain contracts, disbursements, receipts, volumes of minutes, et cetera, et cetera electronically, I guess is the official record. That's the difference, right? So, right. So, we've got hard copies and electronic copies. Now, we can do hard electronic copies exclusively if we like, and that will, that will satisfy the law. That's the change.
Okay. Any, any questions? I didn't have any on that one. Okay. Any questions?
Pardon me?
We're good? Yes. Consent agenda, is there?
Fine, fine.
Yeah. That's good for that one. That was great. Okay. Amendment to superintendent's contract. That's fine. Basically, what this is about?
I said he's fired, right?
You never, you never tell me anything.
Basically, what?
After our performance evaluation with Dr. Jack earlier, our mid-evaluation, we decided that we wanted to also give Dr. Jack the 3% raise that other class, or certified people, employers are getting in the division. So, this amends his contract to allow for that increase. Any discussion?
No.
Yeah, we already, and we, we did this.
Yes.
Plenipotent. Yep.
Great. That's great. Revisions to Section 5 personnel policies. Ms. Downs?
Good evening. The following is a request for the board to review and approve the revisions to policy 5-6.2, dismissal or placement on probation. Recently, we caught that in our policies, it's listed in two different areas, the date that's supposed to notify a teacher of non-renewal. The code changed when we took this, I guess, two, last summer, that it's June 15. So, I'm asking if we could get that updated, and I hope that can go to action tonight. The other is just, the other is just information that the General Assembly has changed several areas that we can make policy adjustments. We have not made any policy adjustments to licensure, relicenter of professional staff or 5-7.3, which is retirement. But that's informational, and if we want to come back and discuss that at a work session, we can do that as well.
Yeah. I had a question about that one. So, if we could, so the 5-6.2, you want to move to action tonight?
Just to make the policies correct in both locations.
The other ones we can put on a work session?
Okay. So, which one?
Just, just the 5.62?
5-6.2.
No. 5-6.2.
Thank you.
Okay. So, that'll go to action item number?
11B.
11B. Okay. All right. I think we can make a motion on our own here. Okay. So, is that it? Okay. Do we have a couple motions here?
You'll take the first one. I'll take the second one. Go ahead.
Sure. I'm, move that the school board move information item 10A to action item 11A for consideration for approval this evening and renumber the remaining agenda items accordingly.
Second?
There's been a motion in a second that the school board move action item number 10A to, or, excuse me, information item number 10A to action item number 11A for consideration for approval this evening and renumber the remaining agenda items accordingly. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Okay. Who's going to do this one?
I motioned that the school board move information item 10D to action item 11B, particularly policy 5-6.2, for consideration for approval this evening. They renumber the remaining agenda items accordingly.
Second? That was great, too. All right. There's been a motion in a second that we move information item number 10D to action item number 11B to consider policy number 5-6.2 for approval this evening. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Okay. So, now we got action items.
I move that the school board approve the education of migratory children certification.
Second? There's been a motion in a second that the school board approve the education of migratory children certification. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Okay. What's our next one?
Our next one is 11B. I motioned that the school board approve personnel policy Section 5-6.2. Second?
Motion in a second that the school board approve personnel policy number 5-6.2. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. And is there any new business or any unfinished business? Brian?
Oh, no.
Well, I thought you were going to talk about this. Madam Chair, I have a discussion point. We've been talking about issues related to power lines in our community and the impact they will have on our schools. And there, you know, we have some information we probably still need. And I think we should further discuss this matter, but also get advice from our attorney about what our rights are for, you know, for property rights and for notification about things that are going to impact school property specifically.
Yeah. I think that what we should do is maybe just request that Dr. Jack, as we already indicated, speak with our attorney, Brad King, and discuss the requirements and what would be necessary for us to make ourselves to be a participant in the, in the case. Since it does involve Faukeer County Public School property, one of the options would go straight across that property. And, and then if necessary, we can have another school board meeting and discuss it further.
Okay. That sounds great. Okay. I agree. That's, that's wonderful.
Yep.
Okay. So, everybody got that?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Thanks, everyone, for being here. Adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
That's the way to do it.